Okay, good evening ladies and gentlemen. It's six o'clock now and so we will start the meeting. My name's Sean Taylor and I'll be chairing this evening's East Area Planning Meeting. On my right are our councillors and plus councillor Hollingsworth and councillor Parks and Poudan at the end of the left-hand side. And this is the planning committee who will be considering tonight's applications. We've also got members of the legal team and the planning officers to the left. I would like to remind everybody that although this is a meeting held in public, it's not a public meeting. We do have some people who have arranged to speak and that's absolutely five. And I can see that the meeting is being filmed. Can I just check that everybody is happy with this meeting being filmed?
Aye.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. So, I have had apologies for absence from councillor Saj Malik and from councillor Nigel Chapman. Do we have, we have councillor Jennifer Peg and councillor Alex Hollingsworth who are substituting. Do we have any declarations of interest? Okay, that's fine, thank you. In that case, if I could ask Sean to present our first, our first ICME on the agenda, and that's 17/00617/CTC, Oxford City Council depot market code. Thank you.
Thank you. The application before the committee tonight is for an extension of the depot to provide additional storage space for up to five years, as well as a reconfiguration and extension of the car park, installation of cycle parking, changes for access and erection of fencing. Couple of updates just like to give the committee before I talk through the presentation in relation to conditions. You would have seen condition one relates to the temporary nature of the commission. That will have to be revised because the extension to the car park is a permanent change. So the condition should actually reflect that and only relate to the extension to the depot as a temporary change and the extension to the car park as permanent works. We have also received additional information from the applicant since the report which has removed the necessity for condition 19, which relates to odour and law use management. I've been talking to the committee about that specifically, necessary. And I would propose an additional condition to require details of fencing, which has been referred to in the report but is missing from the listed conditions. There's a few changes to the conditions that we need to make. I'll just talk the committee through the proposals. So site location plan, as you can see the site has two areas we're talking about. This area here, which is referred to as the south, is where the car park is and therefore the extension to the car park is proposed. And this area here is where the extension to the depot is proposed to the northern end of the existing site. Some photos just to give us the context. And here you can see the existing car park as it's laid out, looking towards the park in that direction. And then the site of the depot itself and post-extensions, you can see there the buildings on the site and the existing fencing that runs along the perimeter. And then looking out from the depot site as it exists towards the area where the post-extension is, you can see there the residential developments, residential properties in the background. And again, another view there is the depot extension, so you can see the open space that is discussed under the report. Some existing plans, that's the existing car park which is to be extended, as well as the extension, it's also being reconfigured as you'll see on the plan. So the additional car parking spaces are delivered by both an extension and a reconfiguration of the spaces. And then the existing site plan to the northern elements where you've got the lake grass that says the open space and the boundary treatment there to the existing depot site. You can see there the residential properties that obviously were referred to in the report and in comments received and sports facilities adjacent to the site. So the proposed site plan again is split into two. This is the area of the car park and the car park extension. And then this is the proposed new storage area that's the extension of the depot. Some more detailed plans there. So the more detailed view of the extension of the depot, as you can see, the track running through it to provide access, so access being created through the existing boundary, and this area being made to a granular surface finish. New perimeter fencing being erected around the site, that's where I refer to a condition asking for further details on that final element, and a planting buffer being created here. So as you'll have seen in the report, the purpose of this extension is to provide additional storage and that relates to additional storage for recycling facilities, green weevens and other elements that go with domestic recycling. And that also relates to increased capacity for the site as a whole for adverse weather storage, so gritting and other things that need it for flooding. So that's the purpose behind the application, to provide additional storage for those two elements of work that is done at the site. And then the proposed extension to the car park, the car park is being extended in this location. And as you can see for comparison to the existing plan, it's also being reconfigured in terms of the spaces to provide additional spaces. And again, in terms of condition, we're requiring a management plan for that area to ensure that the extra parking is used by users of the park. And the purpose behind the application is when there are peak activities such as even football games or things which it's not felt as capacity for park before at the moment. And that's the end of the presentation.
Okay, thank you. For those who aren't familiar with the process, what will happen is I will now ask the public speakers to come forward and then there will be questions. After the questions, we will ask the speakers to return to their seats while the panel has a discussion. So could I ask Judith Harley and Hazel Dawes if they would come forward and they'd like to speak against the meeting? If I can just remind you that you've got five minutes between you and we will be timing that and we'll let you know when you've got one minute left. Is that okay?
It's all right.
Okay, that's fine. So, thank you very much.
Okay. Good evening councillors and ladies and gentlemen. I'm speaking against this application because I feel it's highly problematic. It's asking the council to breach several of its own policies and strategies. SR2 of the Oxford local plan, planning permission will not be granted for development where the open area provides an important green space for local residents. I think 148 written objections demonstrate how important this space is to local residents. So that's breached. CS21 of the core strategy is about maintaining a specific level of green space, to be achieved by refusing the grant of planning permission that results in the loss of sports and leisure facilities. This would lose a leisure facility, the green open space, another breach. Planning permission will only be granted in such circumstances where there are no alternative sites. That's slightly puzzling because we're told this green space will only be needed temporarily for five years. So are we going to be sitting here in five years' time placing, oh please, can we have an extension because there is no alternative site? If it's only temporary, why is there no alternative? Oxford biodiversity action plan has a pollinator strategy. The officer's report itself says removal of the wildflower meadow is against that strategy. Do you really want to be known as an un-green councillor who can't even keep to its own pollinator strategy? Flooding, the development is within zones one and two. The Environment Agency advises that flood zone two should only be developed in exceptional circumstances, the problem being hazardous substances. The officer's report states the site houses a number of activities that have the potential to cause contamination. Do you really want a contaminated site for then to be flooded?
That's too much.
Yeah. First, this application was first submitted in March. We still have no plans from the applicant as to how to deal with flooding in this extremely sensitive site. Do we really trust them to provide such plans? Please reject it.
Chair, committee members. First, I'd like to correct page three of the planning officer's report, page 13 in your agenda. The last planning application submitted for this site was withdrawn less than two years ago in November 2015, with councillor John Turner saying that this site was not suitable for such an expansion at that time. Please ask me about the history of this at the end of my speech. I'm here to urge you to refuse this application contrary to city council policies, the most relevant of which is policy SR2, protected open space. Make no mistake, the whole of Cowley Marsh Park as opposed to playing field is protected open space. The city council signed at the entrance, says Cowley Marsh Park, it is not just a sports field, it is a park, it's protected. Policy SR2 is a policy which we, residents, officers and the East Area Planning Committee have used for many years to protect the nearby William Morris Sports Field from unsuitable and unwanted development. The use of this designation has been wholeheartedly supported by planning officers and councillors alike. Ignore policy SR2 for this application at Cowley Marsh Park and you will set a dangerous and unwelcome precedent for every other site currently protected by SR2. The expansion of the depot and its requirement for more space is being driven by the formation of a new private company, the City Direct Services, as discussed at the full council meeting of 20th of July. If space is really needed, then vertical expansion inside the depot, not horizontal expansion outside should occur. Inside the depot, single-storey parking could easily be converted to two stories. No decision of parking refusal should be made until a full feasibility study has been undertaken. Cowley Marsh Park is not an unused space, it is a wildflower meadow and protected. The city depot should move elsewhere. This should be made sure that it's not a permanent expansion. If you do approve, it should be temporary. Councillors have courage, show backbone and vote to refuse this application. Put your local plan policies before agreed or at least defer this application to satisfy yourself over policies, information and alternatives. I would welcome any questions from the committee or any invitation to comment further on any aspect of this application, history of the site or the officer's report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Can I ask you to just take a seat for a minute? And I'd like to invite, we've got Thomas Edwards from Peterborough who's speaking for the application, and then we'll invite you back up to take questions. You've got five minutes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen and committee members. We'd like to start this evening by talking about some of the ecological improvements that we're doing within the park area. There's been a lot of emphasis on what's being removed and a lot of emphasis on how we're improving the area and what significant benefits that's going to have in long term to the area. We've set up, I clearly know that it's a temporary expansion of the depot within this area and that's a five-year expansion, at which point the wildflower meadow will be reinstated from what it currently is. The wildflower meadow that's there was only planted about seven years ago, so it's not an historic meadow, it was playground equipment and cricket nets in that area which fell into disrepair through years of vandalism. So once the equipment was removed, it was decided that some improvement would be done through some wildflower meadow planting. It's not ideally located for meeting the council's policies regarding pollination and the ecological benefits of having a wildflower meadow. So our ecological report sets out where the meadow would be better placed, among the fringes of the park. And it should be noted that the improvement works that are carried out now, which include bird boxes and various other ecological improvements, will stay in place in perpetuity and won't be removed as part of the temporary. So once the temporary extension is removed in five years' time, you will have the benefit of the improvement works that have been carried out now, which are enhanced to what is currently in place, as well as reinstatement of the meadow facilities that are currently in place on the site. Part of the existing meadow facilities which hasn't been mentioned is a lot of the infrastructure that supported the play equipment and cricket nets is still in place. It's only the above-ground pieces of equipment that was removed at the time. So the cricket net spaces and tarmac are still found below the surfaces. So actually as an area, it's not very well established in that sense. Now, there were comments relating to flooding and drainage and certainly this is something that will be picked up through condition and it would be our obligation to provide a suitable, sustainable drainage solution that would meet all of the Environment Agency's criteria in mitigating any impact or contamination in the area. The depot is not looking to place any materials that could contaminate water sources or ground conditions within this area and they will be capped for then hard surface and suitably drained areas. So there would not be a risk of the materials that could harm being stored or located anywhere near these surfaces. The provision of a granular surface rather than a hard paved surface within this area would improve flood conditions in the area as it would provide storage facilities as opposed to the bound ground or at least the wildflower meadow which would be solid earth below which wouldn't have the water capacity of a gravelled surface. So we see that as an added benefit to the local area. Something that hasn't been touched on much is the car park, the improvements to the car park, and I think which was quite well illustrated there, the expansion is very limited. There's only a handful of spaces being achieved through the expansion and it's more the reconfiguration and overall improvement of the car park that provides the additional spaces and provides the enhancement to the area. There's improved lighting facilities, there's improved fencing facilities and general access and usability of the car park is significantly improved to the current arrangement in place. The management strategy which will be conditioned will further enhance the facilities in the area and benefit the local residents by removing a number of problematic parking areas in the, parking problems in the area on the street. So we see all of us and embrace the condition to have it managed as a positive for the local community and part of giving something to the park and the users thereof.
Okay, thank you. That was fourteen seconds. So would the previous two speakers like to come and back up the table please? No, please stay there, Thomas. If you can stay there and then if there are any concerns that we need to refer to you for, we will do so. So for the moment, the key issues have been concerns around the temporary expansion and seeking assurances that that will be temporary, ecological concerns which Mr Thompson has partly discussed, comments about possible other sites and, you know, concerns that this could potentially stand around protection from the site. So please address those and then I'll ask the committee further questions.
Could you push the button? Thank you. Yes, I think that's exactly the correct summary of it. Okay, sorry, I'll just change the plan. As you touched on, the main concerns are with the northern expansion. We've already touched on the ecological aspects. As you have seen within the conditions and within the report, there is an enhancement scheme that is set out and we would require them to carry out those works. So we acknowledge that there is a loss obviously of the wildflower meadow that exists in the location, but enhancement measures are proposed and that is considered in planning officer's view acceptable in order to mitigate the harm that does arise from the loss of it in this location. And actually, from the officers who have reviewed it in detail, the enhancement measures that are being offered are in fact those enhancements, you know, offered in cases we get something where you're sort of just getting a like-for-like, there is enhancement actually to the ecology across the park here within what is being proposed. The issue there, the more fundamental issue perhaps there is the loss of the space. It is part of the park, it is therefore part of the protected open space. The report acknowledges that, officers acknowledge that. However, what is before us is a temporary commission. It's also a mission which there is another need for. So it is not unheard of within planning that you have a conflict such as this and you have to balance those elements. And this is an example where we have to do that. And it is the view of officers that where we have a proven need for these extra facilities to be provided within the city to aid our recycling support and, yeah, and as Weller issues that I touched on earlier, then when you come to looking at a temporary proposal, even though that temporary proposal loses open space, it is acceptable. Any future application will be determined on its own merits as we say. Accepting a temporary commission does not mean we are obliged to accept anything else in the future. We'll have to assess that if it comes before us. I understand the concern that exists around that, but absolutely what I would say as a assurance is if, you know, any future application we look at in detail at the time that it is before us, this commission would be temporary only. As you see, there'll be conditions relating to the restoration of the site that will have to be carried out once it's no longer needed for the purpose that it's for.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? We've got Mary and Alex and Dick and Ruth and David and John. Okay, so Mary.
Thanks, Chair. I've got four questions. The first one is about the depot site and asking whether we know what the prospects are providing an alternative site for the entire depot within the next five years? And if that isn't found, what will happen to this land? I mean, if you're saying it's temporary, then we should mean that it's temporary. So that's my first question. My second one is about has the management plan been carried out and so when is that going to be carried out? The third one is comments about disabled parking, that the county say that the disabled parking space is, the dimensions are too narrow. Have our plans in place to make sure that that does meet acceptable guidelines? And my final question is about the cycle route. It says that, talks about an enclosed, enclosing a route path and says that the route is used as a cycle track, although the official one is via Barracks Lane. Sorry, I'm just trying to find which paragraph that is. Yeah, it's paragraph 8.43. People have said it's a cycle track, although the recognised cycle route is much to the north of the tennis courts along Barracks. Is this actually a cycle track and what are the implications if it is permitted for cycling if it's used? Okay?
Thank you. I'll respond, but maybe in relation to the first point, the applicant's representative is better placed to answer in terms of future plans. What I always say there is just reiterate what I previously said, it's certainly it's a temporary planning permission for that extension that is proposed tonight. So anything else regardless of what maybe the current thinking or plans would be assessed at that time. In terms of the noise, odour and management plan, the applicant provided additional information to the case officer, to our environmental health colleagues, which has been reviewed since that condition was drafted, which outlines measures that they have already put in place at the site to minimise noise and potential odour impacts that could arise from it. It also confirms that actually they haven't received significant complaints on their current operations. What I would emphasise in relation to noise and odour is that all we could be considering is any impacts that arise from this additional space, not from any operations on the existing site. And the information that has been given to and reviewed by our environmental health colleagues and reassures them that actually there is no need for further plans to be submitted by our condition, hence why we recommend that the petition was deleted. Though obviously the committee members can take a different view on that if they wish to, because the measures that were in place on site at the moment are satisfactory to make sure that there's no additional material harm arising from this development. In relation to disabled parking, absolutely as you know, there's a concern being raised by high rise and we've got condition 13 recommended to ask for details of the car parking layout to ensure car parking layout is acceptable. And in relation to the final point, to my knowledge, it's not an official cycle track that we would be required to maintain, it is a piece of open space and so not, as we've note here, there's a recognised cycle route that runs elsewhere. And there's not a cycle track across this part of the site that is official, that we shouldn't be looking at.
Okay. Does the applicant have other things to add about this point?
The first point obviously extends beyond, sorry, the first point extends beyond our current scope and engagement with our client, but we are aware that they are actively pursuing a solution which enables the depot relocations within the city and are looking to instigate feasibility studies to cover that and provide possible alternatives and identify solutions and sites that would enable them to continue to provide their services without the requirement to extend or remain on this location.
Okay, thank you. Alex.
I think we've got six questions. Sorry. I've got two to the applicant, one to the objection and three to the officers. So if you're doing them batches, is that right? Thank you, Chair. Sorry. Perhaps if I start with the applicant, I'll have two questions to the applicant and then I'll do the objection and I'll do the officers if they come back up. So two questions on the applicant, for the applicant, it's about details on two key elements. The officer's report says that there's no submitted detailed maintenance and management plan for the drainage. You made much of that in your presentation, so perhaps if you could draw out why there's a difference between those two things. And the second thing is another management issue. The car parking is explicitly, the additional car parking is explicitly for participants in football in the evening, not for people working at the depot to be delivered in the morning. I just seem to have to say, if you did, you might just kick for the table leg, it was going to collapse on you. Okay. All right. So if he's something disappears, I apologise for that. So this is going to be, there you are. Safety of council is restored. If, so the condition is that a management plan should be put in place, what form of that management plan takes to prevent commuter unstart car parking? So those are your two questions.
Okay. So it's a water management plan. This is something typically we would expect to come out of condition in a planning application. And as the designers, we would look to put a proposal together that would satisfy both the Environment Agency and the local drainage board's requirements. I was able to discuss it at length because that's part of the specialism that I head up in a team, so we...
we're very aware of having to provide this and are engaged with the applicant in providing a suitable solution and have touched on some of those measures that will already be put in place and have been behind the design of that car, of that area of hard standing. And certainly has driven the specification of materials. So we would provide a management plan in accordance with the Syria guidance in terms of how that area would be treated and managed through the five-year period to ensure that it operated in an effective and efficient way through that time period. The car parking management, again, this is something that we would expect to be addressed through condition, having been raised. And our understanding is the initial focus will be to speak to the city in their current regime for enforcing parking restrictions throughout the city. It won't specifically be set for footballers, but those are identified as the peak use times when the car park is bound to be full or unmanageable. So putting in restrictions on time limits or extended use of the car park would certainly help mitigate those problems of cars being left there for undetermined periods of time.
My question for the objectors, it's a nice and simple one. Notwithstanding the typo, what are the differences between this application and withdrawn application 15/01661/CT3?
Okay, the difference is the extension of the car park effectively. The space that's been identified as storage space is slightly bigger than that application because earlier this year, three of the trees were chopped down. And in the applicant's supporting documentation, they have said, well, as the trees have now gone, we're going to straighten out our boundary for aesthetic reasons, so we're actually giving a bit more space than we had in the previous application. So the site for the bin storage is actually bigger than before because they've already removed three trees. The previous application did not include the extension of the car park, it just kept the car park as it was. And if I can quote, an email from Mike Rowley sent to me on the 3rd of August 2015 regarding the previous extension, he says, Dear all, I had the opportunity to speak with councillor Malik yesterday. He, councillor Abassi, councillor Tanner, board member for Epsom Green at Oxford and myself, are all agreed that the proposed depot extension should not go ahead. Indeed, councillor Tanner and I discussed this and agreed not to proceed as soon as we saw the plans. We will look for alternative storage, but we do not believe it is appropriate to take public green space in Cowley Marsh Park, which, as you say below, the local ward councillors have made great efforts to improve. Best wishes, Mike Rowley. And as you know, our ward councillor, councillor Sade Malik, whom Alex is substituting for this evening, he is opposed to the expansion of the hard standing for the storage bins. He has said he supports the expansion of the car park, but as the whole is a single application, he therefore opposes the whole application. So our ward councillor is not in favour of this. So a long answer, but the difference is it's a bigger proposal than the one that was withdrawn two years ago after getting a lot of public pressure, a lot of discussion with the councillors, and the councillors agreed that this was not an appropriate expansion at that point. Therefore, it's not appropriate at this point either.
I should point out, while I'm substituting councillor Malik, I made my own mind up.
Absolutely.
Questions for the officers then? Three of them, it's the easiest order to do this in. First one is on the cycle parking, so it's a minor technical issue. Says in the report, uses the words "should be undercover, secure and enclosed", which suggests it isn't, it ought to be. Is that something, does that mean that it must be and is that the criteria condition? So that's the first question. The second question is policy SR2 refers to the loss of important green space. That's obviously a subjective test. What is the subjective test of importance? And the final question is there's been a change in the proposals written, which you refer to in introduction, which is that the car parking element is permanent change rather than temporary. Now, I'm aware that most of the concerns reflect the other element, which is still temporary. But in terms of the conclusions drawn by officers in considering the issues, the issue of temporiness, if that's a word, was critical. And now that some of the application is permanent, is there any difference in that advice?
I might just take that last one first because it isn't, the application has always been on that basis. The application's always been on the basis that the car park is permanent and the extension to the depot is temporary. The error was in the drafting of condition one, that it didn't fully reflect what the application has always been for. So the application has been assessed always on that basis. In relation to the first question on cycle parking, condition 14 is requiring the further details of them. It talks about any means of enclosure and they should be covered. So the details of the means of enclosure should be submitted as part of that or will be submitted if it's approved as part of that application for the discharge of that condition. In relation to SR2, I think the key point is, and it is acknowledged in the report, that the site is covered by policy SR2. We do acknowledge that it is just an area that is, that meets definitions within that policy. And as it talks about, paragraph 8.2, we do say there that it is currently free open space and is protected by policy SR2. So the provisions of that policy do apply to the assessment of this application.
Is that answer questions? Okay, Dave, I think you would like.
Thank you, Chair. Got one question that I made to the objectors and another one, I think really, is to the applicant, the applicant that's behind you, the actual people who run the recycling centre, waste centre. So perhaps the first one. There's two issues. One is about land grab, if you like, loss of space, which is a completely separate issue from ecology. The one I'm asking about is, you're about is ecology. The point has been made quite well, I think, that yes, this does involve the loss of a wildflower meadow, but that wildflower meadow grassland is only seven years old, it was put on top of cricket nets and stuff like that. Point one hectare, and what's proposed is actually point three hectare to replace it, so this is an enhancement. I looked at the plans quite closely. I had concern about wildlife corridors and things like that, but I I can't see much, nobody said much about wildlife corridors. Must have been said about bees. Bees can move quite happily. They're probably not terribly bothered about where the wildflowers are. So the point three hectare addition surely is actually an enhancement. And so I'm not persuaded actually that the loss of that particular bit of wildflower meadow, which it's been said isn't actually necessarily the best place, might be better somewhere else. It obviously involves a land grab and that brings me to my second question. So my question to the objectors. But Chair, you pointed to CS2 as being very critical and the first part of CS2 is, open space will only be allocated for development if a need for that development can be demonstrated. There's a lot of things that we would like, but there's a big difference between something we would like and something we actually need. And could, it would be nice if our services can put wheel bins or somewhere in that place, it would be convenient. But that's not the same thing as a need. And I think because of the nature of this open space, the fact that population in this area is increasing, is continuing to increase, the demand on protected open space is increasing. I think it really requires the applicant to demonstrate that it's a critical need. You're not telling me that you can't put wheel bins somewhere else. So why do they have to be here? Because that is actually critical to satisfying course strategy two, which you already identified is a key issue. And it's about the need. Really, it's a question, I think, to the applicant as to why it has to be there.
Yes. Can I maybe pass that to Sharon, if not to the applicant, as to why, why does it have to be here?
I just wanted a point of policy, which is just looking at the wording of policy CS2. I don't see that as relevant to this application because what that's talking about is other areas of open space will only be allocated for development if a need for development on that area can be demonstrated. This site isn't being allocated for development. We've got a planning application proposing development on it. And the other relevant policies are discussed in detail then in the report, where we talk about, yes, it is protected open space. And there is a reference then in the, sort of coming on to the point, talking about policy CS10 about the need for waste recycling facilities within the city. So my own view is that CS2 is not directly relevant to this application because it's talking about how you would assess whether or not to allocate a piece of land. So where we say, you know, within other planning documents, we have areas of land who said, this is what we want to see here. That's allocated for development in that manner. What I would say then on the need is officers are of the opinion that there is planning policy and supporting documents to demonstrate that we do have a need for these types of facilities within the city. The applicant may be able to provide a bit more details to where that's been driven from.
Yeah, I think I think a lot of that's driven from our desire and the council's desire to recycle more of our waste. And diverting waste streams out of our residual containers requires us to have additional containers for health holders and businesses etcetera to put, recycle it in. And the desire to do weekly food waste collections, again, has required us to have more more need for containers to put it in and expand that and try and achieve the levels of recycling that the council wants officers to do. And I think also on the, on the area of flood prevention and snow etcetera like that, to have them facilities where the vehicles are in absolute sense. So to respond in an appropriate, timely manner.
Okay, thank you.
Can I answer councillor Walther's query on biodiversity?
I didn't think councillor, I was actually asking the question on councillor Walther. I just gave the point about it, but if he has a clear question, then I'm happy for you to answer it.
I would like to pick up on something I didn't have time to talk about, which councillor Walther has raised, which is the wildlife corridors. I'm not happy with the ecological survey. I cycle through that area frequently and I have seen both badgers and mountain jack deer. So I query the idea that that does not provide connectivity for wildlife, because it does.
Okay, in that case, I'm going to take Chair's prerogative and can I just question the ecological survey? And, you know, perhaps, perhaps you could address the issue of badgers and mountain jack deer? And, you know, if they were, you know, how the ecological survey was conducted?
The survey has been carried out, you know, in accordance with the correct practices and reviewed by our biodiversity ecology specialists within the council who are satisfied that it's looked at the correct things. So not all sites obviously have to look at everything. Again, I would point out that this isn't a loss of the entire park, so there will be the ability for wildlife to be within the area. There's nothing to demonstrate that I've seen that shows that this particular space is providing a particular wildlife access between two connected parts of green space or other wildlife interest space that will be lost by this application. And that's not what's come out of the review by both the applicant's consultant but also by our own city council and specialist officers in regard to that, that that's not a relevant matter for this development on this part of this site.
Okay, thank you. Perhaps you can move on to Ruth with your question.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, I've got a couple of things really. The first one is paragraph 8.10 talks about whether or not policy SR5 advises, and I've got a bit muddled when I was reading that. And I wondered if the officer could advise because it seems to show that part of the site might be affected by policy SR5 and some of it might not. So I'd just like some clarification on that. The second thing, and I don't know whether you can answer this or not, it seems to me that this space is being used by those who want to do sport and those who do not want to do sporting activities. And it seems to me that what's being envisaged here is for all the sport to be transferred to the park, elsewhere in the park, which leaves much less percentage for people who enjoy the open space and don't necessarily indulge in sports activities. And I don't know whether you have any percentages that you could answer that question with, because I'm very confused. I've read all the responses, every single comment that's come in from people on this application. And there seems to be a discrepancy between the amount of use of the open space that the report talks about and actually how much the residents feel they make use of it. And I don't quite understand that. So that's clearly an important part of why people use the park. There were just a couple of very small things that came up in the letters that I can't see answered in the report. The first one was somebody was worried about the safety of the new pedestrian access, which I'd just like to ask about. The second thing was one resident wrote in and said, there are no evening football matches, I don't know what's going on here. So I would like to ask for the evidence on that.
Just reading, sorry, paragraph 8.10 before I come back to you, I was so anxious to mention around here. My own reading of that is that, I think the point that is trying to be made is that we acknowledge that the site does provide, although it's not protected, it's not protected in both policies, it does provide both immunity facilities. So it does provide open space for the local residents and it does provide sports facilities for local residents. That's the point that the paragraph is trying to make. And in its conclusionary line, what it's essentially trying to say is that the protections that do exist for that space remain, whether or not this, or if this planning permission is granted rather. So its allocation as under SR2 remains even if this planning permission is granted, i.e. once this is done, temporary period is over, that's what it's got to go back to. By granting the temporary permission, you don't make this into a permanent part of the depot basically.
What I'm trying to work out is whether policy SR would be a reason for refusal.
So SR2 would be. SR5 wouldn't be because it's not protected by that policy.
SR5 is black and white. If it's in, if it's protected, if it's allocated in the proposals map or no, called the policy map, then the site could claim the benefit of that policy and therefore it would be a relevant consideration. But it's not, as I understand it, on the proposal map, the policy map. So it doesn't have the benefit of the strict rules of that policy. SR2 is a judgment call for you to make. So you've been told, is it important? The presumption is against development. And then there's a second link to SR2 about alternatives etcetera. So one is a judgment call and the other is a factual matter.
Did you have another question?
There was, there was a woman here. One was, one was on percentage of sports versus non-sport.
I don't have a percentage, no, in terms of, the applicant may do, may not, I don't know, they know, but I don't have a figure as to how much is. I would say though that that's an issue that already exists within the site and exists within many parks. You've got different people using it for different purposes. There isn't, in officers' opinion, the There isn't, in officers' opinion, the, the area of this application within the whole of that park does not result in such a material increase in conflict of uses as to, to make this unacceptable and out of planning sense. I understand the point and I understand why that might be a concern of residents, but I don't see that there's anything in either planning policy or legislation that makes that a relevant consideration in this application, given that the majority of the park is being maintained. It would be a different story if, you know, the whole park was under the curse or something like that, but in this application, this discrete part of the park, I don't see that there's a planning basis for that concern. And safety is covered in 8.43, talks about pedestrian access and paths etcetera. And it's not felt that there's any particular, or that there's any safety issues arising from this application, this particular proposal. In relation to the evening football matches, I'm afraid it may be that there is obviously a difference of opinion by people, what the application's not being recommended solely on the basis that officers think there are evening football matches that make this pressure. That's what's been identified as a particular peak by the applicant in their submission to us, but in the mind of officers, the expansion of the car park is acceptable, even if evening, evening football matches don't actually occur on site.
If I can also just clarify one matter, we started to talk about it implied that it was a permanent change. I just wanted to make sure people understand it is a temporary loss of space before we return to open space. And therefore the issues that have been raised about sport or leisure or the openness etcetera will return. Members need to bear that in mind in their decision-making process.
Yes, thank you.
Could I offer a point of information?
If it's very brief, but this is really time for, for members of the committee to ask questions rather than additional information being given.
With SR2 and SR5?
Well, we've already had the information of SR2 and SR5 from our, our legal services.
And the SR2 protection?
Sorry, excuse me, and unless you wish to, to argue with, with our legal services, then I think we probably.
I do on one point.
Okay, well, this will be interesting.
Okay.
But can please keep it very, very brief?
SR2 protection applies to William Morris Sportsfield. There is a precedent when part of that, the car park, had an application for development. It wasn't for the whole site, that application was refused on the ground that it was part of SR2 of the whole site.
Sorry, can I, sorry, can I just, can I just stop you here because we can only consider the application that's in front of us and I think. Sorry, excuse me, and I think that discussing William Morris Sportsfield within the context of this application is probably not helpful and I think we, you know, we do all have homes eventually to go to. So thank you for your, for your point, but I think we have to draw a line under it. Ruth, had you asked a question you wanted to ask? David, would you like to open for?
Chair, my question's been answered.
Thank you very much. John, do you have a question?
Yes, Chair, just to share, I read the report on, on paragraph 84. It says in the second line, recycling is given high priority of a landfill in order to reduce land take and environmental consequences of this and so on. Given that the city council has been sending our rubbish to an incinerator at Arndley for the past three years, ninety percent of which is burnt and not going to landfill. Is there any particular reason why this is written as it is? I know this report's been around for some time, but it seems rather out of date. And if, if it's been put forward as an argument to say, well, although saving land here, it will save that landfill elsewhere, that isn't true, is it?
It was supposed to say the residents' parts are taken from what is the planning policy aims in terms of waste management and recycling facilities. So that's where that has come from. Waste management as it is operated by colleagues elsewhere in the, the council is not what we're considering tonight. We're considering whether or not this application is acceptable and with planning policy support, the push in terms of recycling, that is officers' view, that there is a, a planning policy basis to drive the need for this application.
Chair, so are we to understand that officers lived in the past in Kalkukuland?
Chair, and I'm sorry to cut you in, the officers explained the purpose of the policy and that's a matter for members to, to take into account and that's the, there.
What I'm trying to get clear, Chair, is whether the officers agree that our waste is now sent not for landfill but for incineration.
But the, sorry, excuse me, the officers have already made clear that actually the, the purpose of the expansion is for equipment, so things like, you know, additional bins and also equip, um, equipment that's needed for severe weather, not recycle it in itself.
So are we to, are we to, is it now the officers' advice that we should disregard some of what is said in 8.4?
Chairman, what is set, set out in 8.4 is correct. I appreciate the, the issue that the member is referring to, whether he sends some to landfill or incinerator is, is secondary. The prime purpose of the, the policy is for, to recognise the importance of recycling, that's, that's a fact.
Able to defend it.
Okay, do we have any further questions then?
Thank you, Chair. I think I was just going back to the recommendation, the recommendation, uh, 11B. Where we're going to delegate authority to the head of planning sustainable development and regulatory services to finalize what's being done there. Um, the question I'd like to ask is, is it possible to request that the chair is involved in this practical process, just to be sure on that? Whatever conditions that you agreed to tonight, actually is very fine and we'll see.
If, if the chairman believes that it's necessary to oversee the discharge or the final product, all, all I would say is, is there some exceptional case here against your normal processes? Certainly you've established who have delegated matters to, to the head of planning. And at the moment, this is not an exceptional case, I would compare against all the others. I appreciate members just seeing these ones that this, this committee, but there is another committee where the approach is taken and this is consistent with that approach. So I'm a bit of a, a loss of why we need to change that position here.
Do I come back?
Yeah.
Well, the reason why I'm requesting this is because if it is not like a third party or outside of application, I would have doubts or some concerns about it. You do request the chair to oversee it, but in this instance, we're actually looking at something that's in-house. And because it's part of the in-house, I'm slightly concerned about, you know, maybe things not happening the way that we've expected. So which is why I'm asking, so that has got to give the whole authority for the head of planning, every part of, through, through which that would be obviously.
I would, I would hope that we could trust our officers as councillors. Alex, you.
Yeah, just a point of clarification, I've sat on West Area Planning Committee mostly, mainly located in appearances here. In rare occasions, and I'm thinking of a large number of applications due to the world bodies, conditions were delegated to officers with consultation with the chair. So it isn't, it isn't setting a precedent and it's not out of keeping the practice of the other planning committee.
Can I just add something? There's a nuance of difference really. You can't delegate authority to a single member, that's unlawful. So the word that was used by the councillor was oversight and the final decision, that's not lawful. What councillor Olling suggested is different, it's not the same. A member being consulted is lawful, but as Paul Stirling said, it's, it's not usual. But there is a difference between delegating, which you can't do, and consulting, which you can.
Chair, I still, I still need, no, Chair, I would like to still come back. It, it is time to get to some consistency in your decision-making process. I mean, this is a, a fine point here. There are other committees where we have our own applications to council committee and officers oversee those discharge of those conditions. And they are applied in a consistent professional manner in a normal way as any other applicant. In, by turning it around because it's the council's applicant, that implies that we typically take a different treatment. And that's something our professional ally finds not acceptable, that we have highly trained officers, they apply the, the rules consistently, whether it is a, a resident or a bit commercial development. And that, that is a, a quite a sacred line to which officers have need to abide by. And therefore I would endorse you not to go down that route in this instance because there is no exceptional circumstance as I see it. And I apologise for making any issue of it, but it is important.
Okay, thank you. I, I don't see that there'll be any need for that.
Yeah, I just have a question, a more kind of a point of information. Why was this put forward as one application? It just seems to me that the issues that are covered in both are, are so separate that it would have been better as two applications, just for future reference. But if you have an answer for that, I, I'd like to hear it.
It may be for the applicant really to ask if we determine what's put before us, so it came to us as one application, we have to deal with it as one application as to why they're chosen to do that. I, I couldn't comment, but they may be able to.
Yeah, quite simply, the application was put forward as a single as these, both elements of work have been identified and budgeted for within the current cycle. And we did not see any concerns or problems taking forward the two applications together as one. And the facilities and improvements that we're providing in both areas significantly improve and enhance the, the park and its users. So combined, it provides significantly more enhancement than individually.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions on points that haven't already been discussed? Because we've had a fairly, I think we've had a fairly varied one, I think we've had a very broad-ranging discussion, so goodbye. So if there's no more questions, could I ask that the applicant and the opposedes return to their seats and thank you all very much here on this evening. So to, to, to proceed to remind everybody, the proposal is about the expansion of the depot, providing additional storage space for up to five years, reconfiguration and extension of the car park, installation cycle path and widening of access in the direction of fencing. And the recommendations from officers is that we approve the application for the reasons given in the report, subject to the required planning conditions set out in section 10 and grant planning permission and that we agree to delegate authority to the head of planning sustainable for development and regulatory services to finalize recommended conditions as set out, and there's quite a lot of them, including the finance amendments additions and your delegation, oh sorry, deletions as the head of planning sustainable development and regulatory services considers reasonably necessary. Before we go on to debate, can I just remind everybody, because they're, these are sort of themes which, which had come up during, during questions, that the application we're considering is for a temporary extension, that we can only be concerned with the application that we have before us and we can't consider either previous applications on this site or applications on other sites. This is, this is about this, this application. And I think the thing that's come through this for me is actually the need to sort of balance the, the need to, you know, for extension to improve recycling and, and storage of equipment that will deal with difficult weather conditions against the, the loss of, of space and, and possible impacts on that. So does anybody have any points that they'd like to raise? Oh, hang on, I put my glasses on. So I think the hands went up as John, Dick, Alex, Ben and David. And then Ruth.
Thank you, Chair. I think the first thing to say is that City Works in this construction site is doing a fantastic job for people in Oxford and the improvement in recycling is a great part, they've helped along by, by then, if possible. And they're also winning contracts, which helps the finances of the council so that we don't have to put up the council tax and we can do a lot of other things. So, you know, let's, let's, that's the background and I think that's important, it's important that that's said. Having said that, I think this is a very fine judgment and a balanced judgment because we are losing park space. There's no doubt that the, that City Works does need more space for storage of, of recycling bins and for the new opportunities of trading, which will benefit everybody in Oxford. The question is whether it's here or whether it should be somewhere else and I'm not convinced that the argument has been made strongly enough that it should be here. The other one I want to make, Chair, is about your comment about temporary. I've been sitting on planning committees for a very long time and planning, a lot of other people have around the table. And you know, Ben, if you can't get something through, make it temporary because the chances are the next time it's considered, it will probably go through. Because let's look at what we intended, sooner or later, and for many years we've been trying to get a better site, City Works would be sold off for housing and moved to another better site and the sooner that day comes, the happier I should be. When it's sold off for housing, the temptation to continue to build housing on this little corner of land will be quite significant. So although the decision is for a temporary permission, I think in practice, unless, you know, history is telling us meaning, is that it could well be longer than that. So, well, Jenny, I think you made your point and you're technically.
Well, I may have, I may have made the point, but I'm also chairing this meeting. And the applicant, the application that we have in front of us is for temporary permission. And that's, you know, according to planning law, that's what we have to consider. We, we may all have our own personal feelings about what may or may not come out of it, but in, you know, in, in, in the context of this meeting, that's probably not something that, that's, you know, we can take into account, I'm afraid.
Can I continue? The, I, I think the chair is absolutely right that what we're asking is if it's a temporary permission. What I was saying was that in my limited experience of councils, that temporarily sometimes becomes longer than that. And I think that's inutile, but I agree with you that it's not a planning reason for refusal, not suggesting that it is. And I'm not going to make a proposal certainly at this stage, but I will say that I will not be voting in favor.
Okay, thank you. Who is next? Dick?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah. For me, this comes down to need, the question of need. I fully accept that City Works are expanding their work, they need places in Oxford, that's, that's clear. That's not particularly relevant because what the key question is, does it need to be here on protected open space? It'd be convenient, but is it needed? I'm not at all dissuaded and I have to, I really struggle to understand how this is not development. I do understand that it's temporary and that at the end of this temporary period, it will revert to presumably protected open, open space, which theoretically could be reinstated. But to me, this is, this is, it is development and it's going to come, that's what it actually is, albeit temporary. And the need has not been demonstrated, I'm afraid. You know, it's really as simple as that.
Alex?
Yeah, I want to address a couple of things, I think. I think what, what John and Dick have said and I think that the officers in their report have made this new in, in your introduction about this. It is, it is a finely balanced position. We have to weigh up two policies against one another because in this instance, they conflict one another. We can't support one without supporting the other and the issue does then come down to this demonstration that this is the best site or the only site or the most appropriate site. And those are subjective, subjective issues.
And those are subjective, subjective issues. There is no doubt there will be a temporary loss of green space. I think Dick in his long question to the, to the objectors made a point that actually it might eventually lead to an enhancement, but that's some way down the line. I think that from my point of view, what, what I think is probably the most relevant thing said was one of the objectors, he said in reference to the previous application, which was withdrawn, application fifteen oh one six oh one. That that wasn't justified then. And I think that's right. It wasn't justified then and that's why it was withdrawn. So the issue is, does that lack of justification two years ago automatically roll forward to be a lack of justification at this point? And I don't think you can make that assumption, that that's one application. This is a different application. And it is quite clear in the proposals that operationally, City Works is struggling to deliver the recycling service in an efficient, cost effective, environmentally friendly way in its current constraints. And applying the principle as I always take when looking at where housing should go, I would say it should go next to Oxford in Greenbelt Lanswell. I think it's going to have recycling operational expansions. It should be next to the recycling operation, not at some distance in other site. So I think on balance, this is the best site available for the required extension. What does concern me is the point that John Tanner has made about the temporariness of this. And clearly we can't make a decision that says that any future planning application should be refused. That's illegal, we can't do that. What we can do is ensure that the conditions, if this is passed, maximise the opportunity for this to be the temporary application that it is supposed to be. And so, for example, the current wording of condition one is very strict. In one sense, it says at the end of five years, it will cease to be used for storing bins or whatever it might be. And the land restored to its former condition, which doesn't set any timetable for that restoration. Now, we had an application recently on the West Area Planning Committee for a temporary building on Blainfield. And the condition there was much stricter in terms of setting a clear timetable for the restoration of lost sports facilities after the temporary use had ceased. And I think that's exactly the sort of condition wording we need to look at here. This seems to me to be too, too vague in terms of the restoration. And that brings us to our second point, to the issue of our conditions and the question that was asked of them and the response to it. It is always difficult when the applicant is the council and the decision making body is a council. It's difficult for councillors who have to sit on a planning committee like this using their judgement in a quasi judicial way. It is equally difficult for officers who have to erect Chinese wall between their professional expertise as planners and their, their obligations as colleagues to other bits of the council. Everyone is appreciative of that. And I think any suggestion that officers, either in City Works, applicants or the planning department as planners have been anything less than exemplary professionals, I think would be completely wrong and unfair. However, it's also difficult for members of the public because it's odd. It's the council acting as judge and jury collectively. And I think it's really important to ensure there is transparency and openness wherever possible. So it was said by officers that there are no unusual circumstances. Well, I think the council being an applicant is an unusual circumstance, particularly when it's a highly contested and contentious issue and where the council is, if it passes this particular application, going to breach at least one of its own planning policies. That's not the same as the majority of applications that are put forward by the council. Mostly they are in line with its own planning policies rather than breaching one. So on that basis, either I think all the conditions should be subject to the test that I suggested, that of consultation with the Chair of the Planning Committee. Or if that's not acceptable, they should be brought back. And certainly the contentious ones should be brought back to this planning committee, as has been done with other applications, to ensure that they meet the aims and objectives of this, this planning committee and that they are not watered down, adjusted and so on. Now, it may be that they're exactly the same words that would have been agreed between the applicant and the planter. I'm sure they will be, but they will be in public session and then therefore the members of the public can see that the decision is being made in a fair and appropriate way. And I think it's a great thing to commend that as an approach.
Ben's the next person.
Chair, I'm sorry, finally it's really difficult to follow what councillor Owen has just said. It is a certain point I would like to make and I'm going to ask you to put that. Thank you.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Thought you meant I was confused, Chair.
I took one of them. Okay, David.
For me as well, it boils down to SR two and how I interpret the temporariness of this application. I agree with Nick that we do need to prove a need. I think officers and the applicant has achieved that. And it's a loss of open space, even if on a temporary measure that I have a problem with. If a condition could be attached where a timeline was established, where it could be reinstated within a year, for example, within a given period, I would be more comfortable voting in favour of it at the moment. I am having problems with SR two at the moment.
Okay, can, can the planter maybe answer that one? It's an extension of condition one to give a timeline.
It may be possible to do it within an extension of condition one or an additional condition perhaps might be more appropriate so that we maintain one condition that makes it clear how long they've got as their temporary permission and another condition that asks that we have set out prior to the end of that period. Because of fairness, they may not know now what they, they want to do in five years' time, but before the end of that five years' time, we have a timeline established for them as to how quickly they will restore the land back to its former condition as required by the, the initial condition, condition one. So essentially a scheme of restoration, for want of a better phrase. I think that would be something we could add into the condition if members were so ready.
Could we achieve that under delegated powers to the officer?
You can do, Chair, but given what Alex has suggested, then that would fall within that remit to the members taking that on board.
Okay, good. I think you wanted to raise a comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank every member of the public that sent in comments because a huge number of people replied to this. So it's obviously a very, very important issue. I think policy CS twenty one or policy SR two are the key ones that I'm concerned about. And SR, SR two does say planning permission may be granted that results in loss of important green space for the local residents. There's the temporary thing that we've got to sort out. But certainly from what I've read, residents are saying it's a shady place in the summer, it's a family space for picnics. I've got, the students have said that they use it for jogging and running. There's amenity space for flat dwellers who don't have very much tools and those five. There's a whole range of people who've got in touch with the council about this issue. I would make the point that trees are not replaceable. Once they go, they go. They don't come back after five years. Okay, they're talking about replanting, but it's not the same thing. As far as parking goes, I'm not terribly persuaded by that either. I like the idea of bringing conditions back to see more about them. And I'm still not sure about condition twelve, which was about the management of important parking. I honestly can't see how that would work. I'm not persuaded about exactly who is doing this parking and overusing adjacent roads. Now, is it definitely the sports players and users of the park? Or is some of it staff, employees? In which case there is clear policy or what people are going for staff that they shouldn't need to bring a car, as far as I'm aware. So these are all comments that I'd like to make on this application.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any other points that they'd like to raise? Now, I would also like to thank everybody who's come along, especially on such an absolutely foul evening. I think, I think this does, does demonstrate that this is obviously something that's very important and it's, it's important that we get it, we get it right. With regards to Alex's discussion around tightening conditions, would committee members be comfortable with identifying which, which conditions? And, sorry, I can't remember the words that was used. And then I'll consult with the, with the planning planners over insurance there in place?
Yeah, I'm trying to remember what my did. I think the specific ones would be one plus one A or whatever it's going to be. The additional bit of one with the restoration plan. I'd say we could go a bit quicker, twelve months, suddenly lift a bit of park standing, restoring the Play-Doh. So I think if university can restore an entire football pitch in six months, you can, we've got the medding for that. But anyway, sorry, I was coming to, so I think it's one. And then I think the parking one, which is roughly twelve and it's the drainage one. Yeah, and then the drainage issues. But I think given the comments in the report from officers, those are clearly very significant issues. Though it is great that Peter Brett Associates has a proper drainage engineer in charge of the project and therefore will be able to deal with those, I'm sure, very professionally quickly. But those seem to be important ones. I don't know if there are any others. But I think the car parking and the restoration, the restoration of the time scale ones are the most important.
Okay, so the ones that we've identified here are conditions one, five, six and twelve.
And seven.
And seven. And the addition to condition one around putting a tight time scale for the restoration at the end of the five year period. So can I, can I check that I'm at least happy with revision nineteen?
Smells of, smells of noise.
That's, that's because that's been, you know, it's, it's a pre-existing facility and that's been dealt with in the, in the previous. Okay, and that will, there will be also an additional condition which will become condition nineteen around fencing. Is everybody on the committee comfortable with that as a proposal?
Sorry, Chair. You just said I was going to replace that condition by another condition.
What I'm saying in introduction is we're proposing to delete the existing condition nineteen, but I am also proposing an additional condition. So that will in effect just become condition nineteen, which is asking for final details of the fencing that are going to go on around the perimeter of the site. So we would still end up with nineteen conditions. The last one would be about fencing rather than that, although.
Okay, and to recap, the proposal is condition one as it stands and its additions. Conditions five, six, seven and twelve will be managed with, with, sorry, with consultation with the Chair of East Area Planning. Is, is everybody satisfied with that? Okay, in that case, I'd like to suggest that we, we move to a vote on the proposal. And I would like to propose that we accept the opposite recommendations with the amendments that we have just discussed. So is anybody, is there somebody who's willing to step back? So that's councillor Peg. So could I have a show of hands for those who are in favour? Okay, for anybody who is against? So that's three. So the proposal is carried. Thank you very much.
That's our part that we've lost. That's our part.
Just buy us.
Okay, so.
Did you live on top of it, not the cottage?
Yeah, we can have five minutes break.